Now. I'm gonna go ahead and share a screen. Shouldn't have been sharing the PowerPoint screen. Okay. Okay, can you all either say or chat to me? Can you see the PowerPoint?
Yes, I can see the PowerPoint.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. If I cut out also, one more thing, if I cut out, please let me know, and I'll just repeat what I said. Okay. So this is the exam one study session for CIT two forty seven. So go ahead and begin. So exam one, this first exam CIT two forty seven will only have thirty questions. There will be one matching question with general networking vocabulary, but fortunately for you, there will be no short answer questions. So um. Yeah, that it's you should have plenty of time to take the exam. Um, one thing, though, about the exam one cash is that. You can only see one question at a time. And when that quite once you leave that question, you can't come back to it. So take as much time as you need for a question. And then be sure to move on and um, you should have plenty of time to fist the exam. While getting your questions, your answers in. But just keep that in mind, you can only you can't go back to a question once you once you answer it. So in addition to a matching question, there are a few fill in. However, you don't need to know. So basically, you're not being asked to just memorize facts and put them down those filling answer. These fill in questions are basically you're going to be given like a terminal. With a bunch of commands in it, you're going to be asked questions based on um. What is given in the picture, like, for example, it's going to ask you um. Like what password is going to be used based on these commands? So nothing bad with these fill in questions. Everything else that does ask you questions is just going to be multiple choice. So the vast majority of the questions are multiple choice. There's one matching question. However, one thing to keep in mind is that most, if not all exam questions will differ from quiz questions. I will note that Dr. Assad made these quizzes. Unfortunately, I have not had the time to look at all of them. But I will say I would believe most, if not all exam questions could be different from what you've had the quizzes. But the general concepts will still be covered, so they won't be terribly different if I'm correct. But anyway, regardless, to prepare for the exam, I would highly recommend you use this study guide. To view the topics you'll be tested on. If you want deeper information on them, the past PowerPoints will do the same thing. But concerning the topic of the exam, there is a decent number, this thirty questions worth, but I wouldn't panic over this. This does look like a lot, but it's not too bad. Um, there's only seventeen slides here, well fourteen, not including these first three. If you just study these fourteen slides after this one, you should be fine, in my opinion, except I think you do quite well. But anyway, the basic networking vocabulary will be covered, so you have a matching question, we need to manage match some questions to a definition. These are all term, the vast majority, if not all of these terms, you've already covered, even in this class or previous ones. It won't be anything too hard. Then there will be the switch processes of MAC address learning and frame forwarding. We'll discuss that in a little bit. But there's also you'll also be tested on your knowledge of collision domains and broadcast domains. You'll basically need to identify them based on a given topology diagram. There'll also be networking devices, you'll need to know features that certain devices have, or specifically it'll be switches, routers and hubs, maybe bridges. Then there's V LANs and trunking, you just need to know about the eight oh two dot one queue trunking. Native V LANs and administrative modes, in addition to how V LANs correlate to broadcast domain and subnet. Um, there'll also be troubleshooting, you'll need to know how to troubleshoot air disabled interfaces and shutdown interfaces. I think I cut out. So you'll need to know how to troubleshoot air disabled interfaces and shutdown interfaces. And then finally, you'll need to know line protocol statuses and port security modes. Okay, first topic. Is basic networking vocabulary, two slides of this, but these are the terms you'll need to know the matching questions, so you'll need to know what a rollover cable is. It physically connects a PC to a switch via the console port. So associate the term rollover with console. And you should be just fine. Actually, what we could do here, make this more visible. So um, this is a good time to say this, so. In my PowerPoint, I sometimes use this red font here, this is a good to know. Um, also, I use this like golden font, sometimes do the same thing, but it's mostly just identify um. Like the terms you need to the terms you needed to find, but anyway, um. A crossover cable connects two switches together, and a straight through cable can connect the router to a switch. So switch memory types, you'll need to list some of these as well. So first, there's RAM, which is the working storage of the switch. It includes the running configuration file that's key. The ROM stores the boot program that finds the Cisco iOS image and loads it to RAM. Then there's flash memory, which stores the iOS image, associate flash with iOS image. For the exam, and then finally NVRAM startup configuration file, and NVRAM should be associated in your mind. And then. There's switch features you need to define. First, there's virtual LAN, which is a V LAN, it groups devices into the same broadcast domain. So spanning tree protocol disables port, switch ports to prevent loops. And on a negotiation helps switches agree on optimal speed and duplicate settings. Does someone try to say something? Okay, I guess not, sorry. Okay, switch modes. So there are three major modes a switch has when you are in the terminal, you should be familiar with these by now, but. User mode has limited privileges, they can only read some information. GNS actually, well, it's not supposed to um, put you in user mode, for some reason this semester it has for some users. Um, you can identify user mode with like the greater than sign, I think it's either greater or less than. But enable global configuration mode after your switch's name, it'll have like the hashtag symbol. But what you need to know for exams that user know can only read, it can't configure anything. Enable mode can read all information and can perform some commands. Uh, fun fact is actually at work, I was doing this, you can actually wipe a switch, like delete all its data in enable mode, you don't need global configuration mode. I was actually doing that at work this week. Then finally, I've got configuration mode or just configuration mode. Um, this is where you've been performing all your configurations, like adding IP addresses to switch ports, um, or enabling disabling ports, creating V LANs. Global configuration modes where you do all that. Okay, this is very important here. Now, these next two slides here cover the two processes you'll need to understand for certain questions, you'll need to combine this knowledge together. You won't be quizzed on listing these things. Here in these two, these two lists, but you need to know this process pretty well in order to answer some of the questions in the exam. So first, we'll discuss how switches forward frames. So this process starts when a switch receive a frame on one of its ports. Now, for example, um, a PC, like a computer like PCA, for example, sends a frame to a switch. So the switch extracts the frame's destination MAC address from its ethernet header. It looks up that destination MAC address in his MAC address table. If the address is in the table, the switch forwards the frame to the port specified in its table. Unless that port is the same port unless the frame was received. So in other words, basically, when a switch receives a frame, it looks to see the destination that the PC is trying to ping with that frame. If the switch knows that destination, that that MAC address, then it will send that 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 frame to that specific device. However, here, if no entry in the exist in the table for the MAC address, the switch forwards the frame out of all interfaces except for the port originates from. In other words, it broadcasts the frame, so that's going to be very important. Oh, I think I cut out. But that's a very important point here, so if the switch does not know, does not have any entries in the MAC address table, or does not have an entry for a specific MAC address. Then it's going to forward that frame out of all, the interface is going to broadcast it all. That would happen, for example, when a switch is just booted, for example, or or. Excuse me, or is we just booted or is just started, like it's just been installed. A switch MAC address learning now. So the following describes how switches learn MAC addresses. So the first step is a switch receives a frame on its ports. The switch retrieves the source MAC address from the frame's ethernet header. So this is important difference here, when switches forward frames, they're looking at the destination MAC addresses. When switches are are trying to learn a MAC address from a frame. They are looking at the source MAC address. One thing to keep in mind is that these two processes typically happen together. So a switch receives a frame. In addition to looking at the source MAC address, it's also looking at the destination MAC address as well. So the both of these processes are happening together. But anyway, the switch receives the source MAC address from the frames ethernet header. The switch searches the MAC address in this table. If the MAC address is not found, the switch then adds that MAC address to its table, associating the address with the port it was it was received from. So basically, the MAC address table has a list of ports and the list and. And associates them with switch port, excuse me. It lists MAC addresses learned and associates them with ports or interfaces on that switch. So the exam is going to have questions on learning and forwarding frames. Excuse me, or learning and forwarding, so the exam. I'm sorry, I cut out. So these questions will, these questions are going to involve this topology here. And you will be asked which ports the frames were forwarded out of. And also, there will be a question on which you'll need to discuss which um. Frames a switch learns, like which PCs it learns it from. So um, this will require you to know how switches learn MAC addresses and forward frames. So. In other words, when a PC is trying to ping, like say, for example, PC two or PCB is trying to ping PCC. If this MAC address doesn't, or this switch does not know host C's MAC address. When it receives host B's frame, it's going to learn host B's MAC address. But it's going to forward out that for that frame out of all the other interfaces. So that's kind of the general process that's going to happen, but after that broadcast frame happens. Basically, all these PCs send responses to the switch, and then swerves through all their MAC addresses. So after that. Um, a PC, whenever a PC pings another one, it's going, the switch is going to know. Which um, interface to send that that um, frame from or through. I do want to ask right now, you can just chat or talk, but does any of this what I've said so far about this slide make any sense? Do you understand what I'm saying? Excellent, that's good, thank you. So um, I am heavily stressing this point because there's multiple questions on the exam about it makes up a pretty heavy portion of the exam. I would say probably a sixth or fifth of it. So this is extremely important to know. So um, some tips I give you here is that remember that when a device sends a frame, the switch learns the MAC that that device's MAC address. This is assuming we're starting the very beginning, like when this process begins. So if it knows the MAC address of a destination device, it will send a frame to that device only. So for example, after the broadcast frame is sent out and the switch learns all the MAC addresses. Any other pings are going to end up with. The switch forwarding that frame to the specific device. However, if the broadcast has not happened yet, it's going to happen, it's going to forward that frame out of all the other. Interfaces except the one that it received the frame from, it's not going to um, broadcast from there. Or broadcast to that device. Here are a couple of other hints. When a PC sends a broadcast frame, note that it will cause the switch to learn all the MAC, the device's MAC addresses. This is because when the piece, the switch sends it, it first learns this device's MAC address, then it forwards it out all the ports. Uh, these PCs respond, and then the switch looks at the sort of the source MAC addresses from these frames, and then adds them to the its MAC address table. So also, when a PC sends a frame, the deep, the destination PC sends a response frame, that's basically what I was just talking about. So this is something to keep in mind when you're taking the exam, these are going to be very important part, that's going to be a very heavy part of the exam. So we're going to also compare broadcast domains and collision domains. So collision domain is the set of devices whose frames can collide with one another. Now, this is very important here, you need to know what devices break up collision domains. So bridges, switches and routers all separate networks into multiple collision domains. However, hubs do not, so hubs cannot separate a network into multiple collision domains. That's going to be important, that's going to be questioned in the exam, by the way. Remember, hubs do not separate collision domains. If you can see this diagram here. The little device here with this an arrow going back and forth, that is a hub, notice how the circle goes all around it. That means this is one collision domain, this is also a bridge here. Notice how this circle here is also collision domain, broad bridges do separate devices to different collision domains, but it only separates them into two. Note how switches, however, and routers, every interface on a switch and a router is its own collision domain. That's going to be important because there's going to be a question that's going to ask you to count the number of collision domains in a topology, it's not going to be this one, by the way. So be sure to use this as an example and learn which devices these are, so that's a switch here. This is a router, this is a hub, and this is a bridge. Be sure to memorize um, how or which ones create multiple collision domains. But also memories which ones create multiple broadcast domains, and that's only routers. So only routers create broadcast domains, each frame on a router is its own broadcast domain. Switches, bridges, and a switch, bridges and hubs do not create broadcast domains. And I'll define broadcast to me here, it is the set of devices for which when one device send the broadcast, all devices receive it. So that this is going to be another great important part of the exam as well. We're going to quickly discuss some networking devices, now you don't need to know a ton, but pretty much everything on this table is going to be very important for the exam. I would say especially like the multiple collision domains, multiple broadcast domains, the cable distances, the bandwidth. Um, the these tape, these four right here especially are going to be very important, so. This table does summarize the major differences between networking devices. Be sure to memorize these facts for the exam, there will be multiple questions that are asked about them, you'll need to know which device. Um, has these features, so for example, you might be asked what devices create multiple broadcast domains. So that's only routers. Which devices have greater cable and distances, that's going to be all all of these devices. Increased bandwidth is only bridge switching router. Okay, switch CLI commands. So the exam will have multiple questions that will have a terminal session, session similar, but not exactly like the one, right? So you're not going to see this exact, these exact commands, they're going to be different ones, they're going to have different words and stuff, but the general, I'm sorry. So um, this terminal here is an example, you're not going to exceed this exact terminal in the exam. You're going to see like similar commands, it's going to be goal configuration mode, you see the enable secret, enable password commands. And so forth, but basically you'll need to know what these commands do. So um, for example, you need to know which commands affect login password, so for example, I'll tell you right here. Um, in this case, if everything was saved here, the login console or login password for console connecting console would be spam. That's because console right here, um, this should be changed. Yeah, that's better. Okay. So um, for line console. So for that star for the line, but for telnet, it would be toast. So look here, the keyword here is line console versus live VTY, VTY would prefer to tell that. So we also need to know enable passwords, so when you have two enable commands, enable secret and enable password. The enable secret one actually will override the able password, um. Can anyone chat or talk, um, explain to me why this is, why would enable secret override enable password? Okay. I'll go ahead and explain why. So the reason able secret overrides enable password here is that the enable secret command creates an encrypted password. So enable secret is the command you want to use, uh, when you use enable password and then use enable secret. Enable secret is going to override they will password, and I will say that is true even if the enable secret command is done first. So just remember that enable secret, uh, the enable password be the one that's next to enable secret command, when you see these two commands in the same session. So the switch display message, you're going to see MOD or TD and then two exclamation marks or something similar, and then you'll see a message. I would say type in the message, or the tip, type in the message, not the exclamation marks. Um, I should, well, yeah, I would say do that, type just this. If you type in the exclamation marks, um, that'll probably count the question wrong, but you can always ask Dr. Assad or me to change that. Finally, telnet connection, now this is pretty important here. So these line VTY commands, they have two numbers here, so basically that has the number of connections the switch can have all at once. So um. You start counting from zero and you go all the way up to this number, so this is actually sixteen telnet connections. Now, obviously, as we learned from the lab, and I apologize for that, is that GNS switches don't actually support fifteen, they only support like I guess five. Yeah, I apologize for that, I still need to update the command guide for that, I'll try to remember to do that. But anyway, um, that's just they'll let you know for exam. Okay, so the lab two assignment command guy can help you review what these commands do, I'm the command guide, this is another thing, I made a command guide for studying these commands, it lets you know what they do. But I will give you one hint for the exam, what would have, I want you all to um, either chat me or tell me this. What would happen if the switch was rebooted after the session, so look carefully at the commands, let's say all these commands, there was everything that was typed on the switch, we reboot it. What would happen to the configurations we just made? Okay, I guess I'll go ahead and answer, I should check, do you, anyone hear me, you can just chat me, quick message, can anyone still hear me? But anyway. What would happen here? Okay, good, thank you. So basically, what would happen is that all these configurations would not be saved. That's because there's no copy run start, if the switch was just rebooted. You do, you would lose all these, you've probably experienced this all, experienced this already in GNS, but if you don't run copy run configure, copy RUST. And copy running config, start of config, you'll lose everything here. Okay. So switch show commands, there will be some questions on that'll involve knowledge on show commands. Um, for example, there's the show interface command, it'll just list interface or information about the interfaces, now this includes status codes, it's going to be important. So show interface switch port displays important facts about switch ports, as its name implies. This includes its name, whether a port is a trunk, its status, and so forth. Show interface trunk will show which interfaces are trunking interfaces. So there's a key similarity between these two, you want to keep in mind for the exam. Then there's show CDP neighbors, this shows neighboring devices and information about them, so um, that'll be another thing to keep in mind for the exam. So you don't need to know all the show commands, just a few, um, the ones I listed here, that will be enough for you. So V LANs and trunking, so. The V LAN information you know isn't incredibly in depth, like you're not going to be asked to configure anything in the exam. But you'll need to know some basic facts about them. So um, there's V LANs, which is a switch setting that virtually groups one or more ports into the same broadcast domain, and actually there's main V LANs and broadcast domains are synonymous, basically. A broadcast, a V LAN is a broadcast domain. And that's why we recruit, we also, we basically get to divide the switch ports into multiple broadcast domains. Without V LANs, one switch is just a single broadcast, but with V LANs. We create virtual divisions that create multiple broadcast domains on the same switch. So V LANs follow many of the same rules that apply to LANs, for example, all devices and interfaces of V LAN are the same broadcast domain, here's an important part. Each V LAN needs to have its own subnet, so if you have like three V LANs, you need three subnets on that switch. So without routing, devices in different V LANs cannot communicate with one another. Well, I should say not in the same switch, I should say the devices connected to that switch in those V LANs. If you have three V LANs, you need three subsets for the devices all within the V LANs, based on which V LAN they're in. But then we have trunking, trunking allows communication between devices in the same V LAN that are connected to different switches. So trunking uses eight oh two dot one queue encapsulation. It is an IE standard protocol that inserts a thirty two bit tag into the ethernet header. Uh, an important thing here is native V LANs. Um, frames of this V LAN are not tagged, so when you have eight oh two dot one queue trunking. And a switch sends a frame, or the switch sends a frame to another switch. And that frame is from the native V LAN. The frames from that V LAN are not tagged. So um, the native V LAN is V LAN one by default, but that's an important point here, neither not tagged. Okay, one thing, so trunking administrative administrative modes. So the following table showcases the results of various trunking administration mode options configured on two connecting trunking interfaces. Forgive for the word, forgive me for the word salad there, but um, basically what that means is that one interface is configured with one mode, another interface is connected with another. Oh, good question, uh, to my knowledge, no. I don't believe you can have more than one native V LAN, um. Native V LAN is, um, I believe the reason for that is to support switches that can't support V LANs, basically. Um. But. Yeah, if you put a device in a native V LAN. Or two devices native V LANs between two switches, they won't be tagged. The native V LAN is more of a compatibility option, actually, your textbook talks a little more about native V LANs. But to answer your question, there can, I believe there can only be one. But that is a really good question, I'm really glad you asked. Excellent. Okay. Now, this table here is um, may look a little daunting. But if you just memorized um, how the access or the administrative modes interact with one another, and it becomes a lot simpler. So first, there's access mode, which makes a port always act like an access non-trunking port. So these kind of ports would be like the port, the switch ports that are connected to your PCs. Obviously, there's no reason a piece of port connected to a PC needs to do trunking. Trunking is only to keep, um, is only for ports between switches. And that's if there are multiple V LANs, but anyway, yeah. Access ports are going to be non-trunking, no trunking is going to happen whatsoever, if one interface has access mode enabled. Then the other interface's operational mode is not going to be trunking. Even if it's set the trunk, it doesn't matter what the other switch is set to, so you can see here. If both switches are set to access and access, the operation will be access. Um, access and dynamic auto also result in access, and as well, uh, access dynamic desirable. So no matter what, if this is access, there's not going to be a trunk in access should not be, you're not going to be quizzed on this. Um, but yeah, these are not used, you don't need to worry about this for the 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 trunk and access being together, that's not going to be quizzed on. Um, however, if you, you can also set the port always act like a trunking port. I should that say that's concerning administration mode. What is administration mode is what the switch port is set to, but operational mode is what it's actually going to be. You're not going to be quizzed on that def, those definitions, but that's just to keep in mind. Now, there's also dynamic desirable, dynamic auto, these are interesting, so dynamic desire will make support actively send negotiation messages to design whether to use trunking. And dynamic auto makes a port passively wait to receive trunking negotiation messages. So basically, if two ports, you can see in this table, or two ports are set to dynamic auto, because they're not looking to be a trunking interface, but they can, they're just waiting to be, they're just going to be access mode, operational access mode. Um, if however, a interface is set to trunk. And then we have dynamic auto or dynamic desirable, it's automatically going to trunk, it'll actually, the interface will actually become trunking interfaces. Dynamic desirable, when it's paired up with another interface as dynamic auto or dynamic desirable, will also result in trunking interfaces. Uh, I do want to ask, um, if you could chat me quickly, does this make sense? Do I need to explain this further? What would you like me to explain more? Just um, to get a better idea of what you need to understand. So um, if you're, while you're on dynamic auto, okay, yes. So dynamic auto. So um, to understand dynamic auto, we need to first look at dynamic desirable. So um, when you, when you set up a switch interface or trunking interfaces, you can either set them explicitly be trunking, like they're going to be trunking no matter what, basically. Unless you have access, dynamic desirable, basically, the switch, you set the interface to not explicitly explicitly be a trunk. But it's actively looking to be in, it's looking to negotiate with the other interface to be trunking interface. Dynamic auto basically is the trunk can be an interface, or a trunk, excuse me, the interface can be a trunking interface. But the other device, the other interface needs to be actively searching or actively um. Looking to negotiate that. So for example, we have one switch, and we have an interface, like say like E zero zero, then we have another interface on the second switch called easier or easier one. If we set easier of zero to dynamic auto, and we set the other interface to dynamic auto. The problem is, is that we won't actually receive a trunking interface, is because these, uh, we set the interfaces that dynamic auto, they don't have the capacity to set up a negotiation, basically. They they can do it, but they're, they can negotiate, but they can't ask for the negotiation, they can't ask to negotiate, basically. Um, dynamic desirable, however, doesn't make the trunk explicitly, or the interface explicitly trunk, but it does set the interface to look out to basically um, negotiate trunking settings. Does that, you can chat me, um, Kate, but that's that, answer your question a little better? Excellent, okay. So you don't need to overthink it too much here, um, basically what you're going to be asked about, you're not going to be asked about what these settings are going to be doing, but you're going to be asking, basically receive a question like, um. Hey, this interface is set to this, like, for example, let's say it's set like the dynamic auto. Anyway, that's hey, what settings will make this trunk, uh, this interface become a trunking port? So um, you're going to be given these four options, and if the first port is set to dynamic auto, the only thing that's going to make the other interface trunk from a trunk is going to be saying it the trunk or dynamic desirable. That's kind of what you're going to be asked here, and that's what this table does, so. What you just need to memorize how these settings interact with one another. So troubleshooting, I'm not a ton on troubleshooting, but there's going to be two problems you're going to need to discuss in the lab, not with short answer, but with multiple choice questions. So if you have a port that's air disabled. To enable, to re-enable it, you need to disable and then re-enable the port with shutdown, no shutdown, so when you have air disabled, the resolution is shutdown, no shutdown commands. So if you have a shutdown interface, it's going to have the um. It's going to basically shut down completely, it's administratively shut down. To re-enable it, you just do the no shutdown command. Now, if you want to trouble, if you wanted to um, look at more troubleshooting stuff, or have more details of these problems, the module for PowerPoint has more stuff on this. But um, here is another thing, interface status codes. So when you do a command like show interface description. You'll see a bunch of these, uh, you'll see, see the interface names, and you also see like these, these codes, line status and protocol status. So what these do. Is that they tell you the status of the interface as they imply, name implies, I wish I had a better word to say that, but. Basically, they tell you what is going off the interface. So if you see up up, that means the interface is working, that's good, you can kind of ignore this part here, interface. Status, I don't think that, you might need to know this, um, memorize it anyway, but you may not, just to let you know. But. Um. Excuse me. So. However, if you don't see up up, you'll see one of these error messages, with the exception of up down, that's more, that's a router thing, you're not going to see that in the exam, I don't believe. But if you do, just say it's not expected, or whatever is like that. But basically, when you see admin down, it's slash or admin down slash down on an interface, that means it's disabled, that means it's. That means it's configured with the shutdown command. It's administratively down. It can't forward anything. So when you see down, down, you have the not connect interface status message. This means that the case is a physical cable issue. So the cable is bad, or there's the device on the other end is down, or there's just no cable at all. You tip, you'll see this quite a bit, like GNS, where you see down, down, if the, if the interfaces aren't already set down with the shutdown command, you'll see down, down. And interfaces. Um, second is up, down, or third is up, down. That's not going to be on switch. Then you have down, down, air disabled. So port security has disabled the interface. Air disabled refers to port security disabling the interface. And then finally, up, up is just interface working. So memorize this. You will be asked to map these. To their um, causes. And or their interface status, just to let you know, so this table is going to be important for you to memorize. Finally, we have port security settings. So um. Let's see here. So there's three major port security settings. It's protect, restrict, and shutdown. So you'll need to know what each of these do. You'll have another matching question that discusses this. So the protect option will only discard offending traffic. That's all protect mode does. Restrict mode will discard traffic. It will also send a log message and increment the violation counter. And then shutdown will do all three. Or I'll do all four of those actions. So basically, they, they, these three settings increment in um, strictness. And that's how you can memorize that. So. That is basically it. That is pretty much all you need to know for exam one. Not too many slides. Um. I think you'll do pretty well in this exam. If you study everything we went through today, you should do just fine in the exam. But before I stop my recording, um, or stop the session, I would just want to um, thank you all for coming here. And if you have any questions on anything, that would be a very good time to ask.
I don't have any questions, but do you mind showing that one slide if it's not too much of a problem? Um, showing the one slide with the. It had the um, the topography with the. That you said would be tested on.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to take a look at.
Excellent. Yeah, absolutely. Um, by the way, this will be posted on canvas.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll have all today and whatever time you have till tomorrow to review this. Are you in the in-person or online?
In person.
How are you liking it?
I like it a lot. I enjoy being in person.
Excellent.
Nice to have, yeah.
Really good. So yeah, um, this, I will say this topology will appear, this exact topology will appear in the exam. I wish I could give a question example, but I don't think I can really do that. Honestly, this, these, this slide is these, um, sorry. This presentation is pretty telling. What all you'll be tested on. So um, yeah, do study it very carefully. Um, the, as I, like I said before, the exam questions are going to be very different from your quiz questions. Uh, I do know that a lot of students in the past have struggled with these exams. So do, to, do try to do your best and um, take your time because you have plenty of time to answer the questions. Um, you should do fine, I believe. If you just studied this PowerPoint, you might want to go a little more in depth. I would say look at the first four PowerPoints as well, like from. The first four modules. Those PowerPoints will also give you more details that might help you. But I think what's here will get you most of the way through. I would say another thing, if you don't understand a certain topic, go back to the PowerPoint and take a look at it.
Okay.
Excellent. Any other questions? Or Kate, do you have any questions? Excellent. I did want to ask you to, how did this session, was this session helpful? Did you learn a lot?
Absolutely.
Excellent. I'm really glad to hear that. I'm glad. I'm glad I was worth your time.
So thank you, Tyler.
Very welcome. I'm glad I was worth your time today. Um, a lot of people haven't been coming to my um. My office hours said, it looks to me like you all are doing really well and are pretty independent. So honestly, that makes me very happy. Um, previous semesters, I've had a lot more people come. I guess I should stop the recording now. But anyway, thank you all for listening and um. Um, this video will be on YouTube for you all to review and uh, goodbye.